Please rise for the invocation to be led by Mr. Skinner, followed by the pledge led by Mr. McLaughlin.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this gathering of all our citizens to do Spotsylvania business. We ask you to keep all our citizens safe. We ask you to keep our military people deployed overseas in harm's way safe, and we ask you to keep their families safe, too. We ask this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
In the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we need to fix our agenda, and before we do that, Carl has asked me, or advised me, that we should add another closed session after the public hearing section of our agenda tonight, without objection.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to that, in connection with tonight's agenda, the presentation from Human Resources, the situation was brought to the board's attention that was the advent of that presentation is actually proven to be covered by short-term disability insurance. And so, with the board's consent, I would like to move that presentation to a later date in order that it could be made together with other elements of the whole buffet of employee benefits for consideration together as opposed to separate consideration of this one issue.
Okay, well, without objection, then, with those two changes, I have a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion approved.
All right, we'll call the question.
Thank you. That brings us to tonight's consent agenda. May I have the floor computer, please? The evening's consent agenda, gentlemen, is as follows. First is approval of the minutes from your May 9, 2017, meeting. Second is the approval of three contract modifications, these for one-year renewals of multiple engineering contracts with firms that provide professional engineering design services for transportation projects. Third is approval of contract with Nostos SS Contractors LLC. This will provide work on the battlefield elevated water storage tank to renovate and paint it at a cost of $200,200, which was the low bid, by about a third, as I recall. Next is approval of J.L. Kenton Sons Incorporated contract. This is for the Massaponix Church Road waterline relocation at a low bid price of $198,330. Next is the appointment of Michael P. Smith as an alternate member to the CBRC. This is for a term expiring December 31 of 2019. Next is the appointment of Kimberly Bowen Pomato as an alternate member of the CBRC for a term expiring December 31 of this year, 2017. Next is to authorize advertisement of a public hearing for amendments and additions to the county code regarding the posting of dwelling and building address numbers. Eighth is to authorize advertisement of a public hearing for the renewal of Congressman Brat's office lease, which is in this building. Next is a routine business property tax refund, this for Wellburn Enterprises, Inc., trading as McDonald's Restaurant Number 3264. It's for a refund, this is pursuant to county code and standard process, it's $5,653.71. Similarly, a business property refund for Inwood Design is next. Inwood Design Build Limited, that's $6,297.76. Eleventh is a business property refund for Turco Two, Inc., trading as 208 Tyron Auto Repair for $3,533.69. Twelfth are human resources policy revisions. These are minor and generally housekeeping matters, small changes in chapters 10, 14, 19, and 21, which were in your packet. Item 13 is approval and application of the State Homeland Security Program. It's a grant program, application to request a grant for two unmanned aircraft systems. Total grant is $45,150. There is no local match, and that is your consent agenda.
Any board member wish to pull any item off the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Call the question. I think that brings us to public presentations. Mark, do you want to go over the...
Yes, sir.
All right, let me run through the guidelines for public presentations briefly, if I may. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters that you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way communication and comments from you to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet and please print clearly for our records. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name, your address, and your voting district for the record. Address your comments, please, directly to the Board of Supervisors. State whether you are speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or speaking on behalf of a group that you represent, in which case you'll have five minutes. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters that are the subject of public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. And as always, your written comments are welcomed by the Board of Supervisors. Amy, who is our first signed up?
The first citizen signed up to speak is Douglas Stedman, followed by Michael Berry.
I got to warn you, I brought some friends with me, and if that's not enough, I'll bring some more. I'm Carl Stedman. I live in Forest Walk Drive, Chancellor District. What else did you say I had to say? Anyway, it's, we live on a dusty road where the winds are westerly, and I live on the east side. We can't wash our cars. Forty years, we've been on a list, and we had a meeting the other day, and they said we haven't moved up one notch. While Ford Lake was built, Forest Walk, I mean, a place over on, it was repaved, all the streets and the smoke tree, repaved, didn't even need repaving, in my estimation. Now, what I'm asking is, could you, in forty years, people have died waiting, and we just wonder if we don't have black lung disease? We can't open our windows, I mean, I know I'm making this worse than it really is, but we can't sit in our yards, we can't wash our cars, and we have to pay a man twice a year to put a road grader, and it lasts about two days, and that's all done away with it again. The dust is back. So, in conclusion, I would say to you, I'll fire my last shot. Please, please pave that road. We need a van. God bless. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, too.
Michael Berry.
I live in Lee Hill District. It's come to the attention of several members of the community that the county is paying $15,000 so that the Oric Sims Farm can be surveyed. I'm a little concerned about this because 15K is a big amount of money to a small charity that serves the county. $15,000 could go to the food bank, $15,000 could go to other charities. The next time I need my property surveyed, I wonder if I'm going to be approved for the cost of my survey. So, I'd just like you to take a look at that. And the second thing is, we've had a discussion, a spirited discussion, about the UAVs that are on the agenda tonight. We just wanted to let you know that we support this because the police department, the sheriff's department, needs to understand how to use that for law enforcement without interfering with our property rights. Thank you very much.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Is there anybody that didn't sign up to speak that would like to speak at this time? And we'll close public presentations. That goes to board reports. So, with that, Mr. Jakobowski, you have anything for board reports?
None this evening.
Mr. Sebula?
No report.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No report.
Mr. Benton?
No report.
Dr. Trampy?
No report.
Mr. Skinner?
Sorry to break through.
No, that's okay. I'm going to break it, too.
I just want to remind the board members, June 2 at Shannon Airport, we'll be opening the museum around 10 o'clock in the morning, so you're all invited there, please, and welcome to see you there. That's all. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, I've just got two quick things. I see Debbie Williams is out in the audience tonight, or Commissioner of Revenue, and I want to thank her. For those of you that don't know, she has actually been working on out-of-state tags that are, that some people might move to Spotsylvania and keep their tags, and then therefore not pay their personal property tax, and I think she's collected $6,000 already? Is that correct? That's additional. And she's working on doing some more, so that's encouraging. So, if you're out, have out-of-state tags and you're a Spotsylvania resident, please get Virginia tags. And, let's see, the other thing I had was for the UAV use, the sheriff's department did confirm with the board that they can only use these UAVs if a search warrant is issued, and they're also going to be using them for doing fire, search and rescue. They are, they're quadcopters. They do have forward-looking infrared on them, so they can be used for fighting, search and rescue, and other things like that, too. But that was a concern of many board members, and I think, for me, the sheriff's department did address those. But thanks for bringing that up, and that's all I've got.
Mr. Chairman, one, save round. Sir, I already, I sent a email to VDOT requesting update on Forest Walk. So, if you leave your phone number with the...
Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Chairman, before we jump into public hearings, I know there isn't space for any other report here, but I do want to mention, while we have good viewership, to highlight the fact that the board's next meeting is June 15. It's on the Thursday, not the Tuesday.
Okay.
Because the Tuesday is the gubernatorial primary. Also wanted to note that county offices are closed on this following Monday, which is Memorial Day, this coming Monday, and there will be a wreath laying observance over in front of the old courthouse, the historic courthouse, at 10:00 a.m. And wanted to highlight those matters.
Yep, thank you, Mark. Those are two good points. That June 15 was confusing me, so thank you. All right, with that, we'll go to our first and only public hearing tonight, R-160004.
And our newest, or one of our newest alternates to the CBRC, good evening, Kimberly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to amend the proffers related to the transportation improvements approved with the rezoning case approved in 2004 to rezone 171 acres from R2, from rule to R2 to create a 59-lot subdivision. You'll recall this public hearing was continued from your April 25 meeting to allow the applicant time to make revisions to the proffers related to the timing of the construction and the cash payment, and to remove all the trails within the development. The applicant did submit revised proffers dated May 4, which were included in your packet. The first among many changes included the removal of all the language related to the trails, and staff had no objection with that. However, staff identified a number of concerns with the revised language that related to the construction of the transportation improvements and the cash payment, including, one, extraordinary lengthy amount of time to complete the construction, which was five and a half years, and also there was additional qualifier language within the cash payment section that also included some loopholes, which provided the county no guarantees for the payment should the improvements not be completed. Based on those outstanding issues, staff did recommend denial of the proffers that were included in your packet dated May 4. However, it's staff, staff's understanding that the applicant does intend to propose new changes to the board this evening. Staff and the county attorney have had a chance to review these changes, and I can say that while the county attorney's office is not yet ready to approve this document as to form, staff believes that all the loopholes have been closed and that this version will truly provide those guarantees to the county that have been lacking in the many iterations of this document. We have explained to the applicant that with these proposed changes this evening, it'll trigger the public hearing to remain open and this be continued to your next meeting, which is June 15. And so, they are aware of that, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
I think the, Carl, did you have something you want to state?
Obviously, you know, the public hearing still has to be opened, but if, assuming that, Deborah Ray, if these are the same proffers that we were provided earlier, it's our opinion that while it's required to be continued, it doesn't appear to be a change that's material that would require that the public hearing be kept open. So, if the board chooses, it could close the public hearing, but it would require continuance.
All right, well, with that, do we have a time for people to speak, since the public hearing is still open tonight?
Oh, yeah, you definitely have to open the public hearing and have the public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing. Is anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody that's not signed up to speak that would like to speak on this topic?
I guess if the applicant doesn't have anything to state, then I guess...
Is the applicant, is the applicant going to provide those?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff, my name is Deborah Ray Carnes. I'm a land use planner and attorney employed by Lemming &amp; Healy, here representing the client. And staff has done a good job of summarizing where we stand. Bottom line, from day one, my client intended to honor the commitments made at the last meeting, to remove the trail and to provide better language concerning the payment. We have revised proffers that we have submitted to staff as described, which reduced the total timeframe for construction from five and a half years to four and a half years. We've also visited with the staff frequently over the last few weeks to perfect the language about timing. Now, we had originally said, if the applicant is unable for any reason to complete the improvements, they will pay the cash amount, which we thought was pretty definitive, but we are happy to work with staff and the county attorney to perfect that provision, and the proffers that we have turned in address it. Basically, they say the applicant shall construct the improvements within four and a half years or pay the cash payment. I'm not sure how we can make it any plainer, but I'm here to answer any other questions and ask that you continue this hearing until the next meeting, so this matter can go forward.
Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, one question. So, the way I understand it, though, is if the road is, or the improvements aren't made within the four and a half years, the full amount will be paid. Is that correct? No deductions?
There is a provision in there for deductions. Okay, let me read it to you. And by the way, I'm happy to receive your comments on this.
And, Mr. Chairman, the red, there's a red line that we just passed around, and this is the last version that Deborah Ray is presenting right now.
Thank you.
And the language in question is on page six, and the last question, the last sentence, rather, in response to your question, "In the event that the improvements are not fully completed, the county at its sole discretion may require the applicant to pay a sum to the county that represents the estimated cost to complete the improvements as determined by VDOT." This is to cover the rare instance where substantial improvements have already been made, and it would be unfair for the applicant to pay the full amount, but it is in the sole control of the county. And the, under these proffers, the applicant would be expected to pay the entire $971,664 plus interest unless the county, again, at its sole discretion, agreed to a lesser amount.
Mr. McLaughlin, I would agree with this Deborah Ray. There is some wordsmithing that, as Kim represented, as Deborah Ray represented, that we'll still need to do in working with them, but she is correct, that the lesser amount is only if the county decides to allow that lesser amount. If the county doesn't, the goal is still, again, they'll require the full payment. So, again, it is completely in control of the county. We are going to wordsmith a couple of things, but that's correct. It's in, it's in control of the county at that point.
Okay, and the last question I had, I understand there was a proffer, some landscaping as well? I don't see that in here. Is that in here?
I believe the landscaping was handled in the last proffers and has already been installed.
I don't think that's...
Kim, was that on the GDP? Was that addressed on the GDP?
There was, there was never a landscaping proffer, or the only landscaping, the additional landscaping that was shown on the GDP was adjacent to the Craig's Farm, which would have been on the western portion of this project.
And what was that?
It was just, it was enhanced, an enhanced landscaped buffer on the western side.
So, the last eye was on the impression that was, there was, a proffer was made by, I'm not sure whether it was Mr. Lemmy or someone else, they were going to install some landscaping, some shrubbery or something along one of the property boundaries?
We will be happy to check on that for you and incorporate it in the next revision if indicated.
Does that, does that delay anything?
It shouldn't.
But if we continue this, if we close the hearing and continue this, they can add any of that landscaping in and...
As, as I recall, you and I, our discussions, that will be fine, and I think you've stated your concern, and the applicants will have a chance to address that. So, I think, I think that'll be, I think that's been addressed.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Skinner?
A question pertaining to the amount of $971,664. I take it, is that the improvements to the road?
Yes.
Okay, and that's based on, because over what, a, is this over a four-year period now, like it's a five-year period?
It's a maximum four and a half-year period.
Four and a half-year period. And my question is, when do you feel that the first part of that improvement on the roads would be started? The question I'm asking is, is this a true value of what it was going to cost to do the road, so that if we end up having to take that, is that going to cover the cost for us? I mean, where did we come up with the 971, I believe it was, roughly?
The estimate was computed by the engineer. It includes acquisition of right-of-way cost, the cost to relocate the utility and build the road, and, of course, the engineering and application fees. The engineers believe that reflects a true estimate of the cost of the road and envisions the road substantially complete. That's a VDOT term, meaning open to the public.
Okay.
At the four and a half-year point, if not before.
Okay, I think that answers my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Jakobowski?
Just to piggyback on that, then, are you saying, then, that VDOT has checked these numbers and agrees with these numbers? County staff has agreed with these numbers, or is this solely the applicant telling us that that's what it's going to cost?
This was the estimate that was provided during the initial rezoning, and it was approved by the county's traffic engineer and VDOT as well.
Okay, so we...
At that time, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, if we can continue this till our June 15 meeting and then answer all, that'll check all the blocks.
I have a motion to continue this to the June 15 meeting. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Seven yes.
That takes us to our closed-door session. Carl?
This will be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, and performance to motion salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically a board appointee, and whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in Lee Hills District, Lee's Hill District, and whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically planning and zoning matters, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711 A1, 3, and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Have a motion? Call the question.
Seven yes.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2, 3712D, the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved, the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll-call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Jakobowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
And the chair, aye. Okay. With that, I believe we're at the number two item for presentation reports by others, the vote on special use permit 16-0011. Is that correct?
Sir.
Okay, are there any questions this time from the board? All right, well, here's, this is in the Cortlandt District that I represent, so I'm going to say a couple of things for this special use permit application. I'm going to say that the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the special use permit. The applicant confirmed that the tower desired is predominantly to address capacity issues, but not because there's a significant coverage gap. I've got a petition from about 100 residents, of which at least 50 or more are in that specific direct area, that are opposed to the cell tower because of negative aesthetic and property value impacts, and we're very concerned about their property values. And based on that, I'd like to motion the denial resolution in our package for special use permit 16-0011. Any other discussion? We'll call the question.
Mr. Chair, as part of the required procedures, there is a requirement that the board notify the applicant in case there is a denial. What we have here is a draft communication for your consideration, and I also have one for Amy for the public there. So, I'm going to pass that out now, and I would ask the board consider it and approve it. It will go out under Mr. Taylor's signature. It will reference the reasons, although you already have in the resolution, and will also state where the information's available to see the meeting minutes that have happened already, and also the recorded meetings, in case the applicant has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready, it's just a motion, if you would, to approve. And of course, discussion or whatever you all would like to do.
Okay. So this is the denial, this is a motion to...
Motion to approve the, the letter going out under Mark's signature to inform the applicant of the denial, the board.
So moved. Any other discussion? Call to question.
Seven, yes.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to a presentation on the courthouse area development and county space needs. Have the floor computer, please. Well, that does work. That's excellent. This is a continuation or a follow-on to the presentations from your last meeting to add some data and hopefully position the board to provide some guidance to staff so that we can proceed forward. As a, as a brief point of background, recall, please, that I've been your county administrator since June of 2015. The space needs study that has been one of our data pools to work from about county needs is from 2013. And I was interested to note that the 2013, so the 2013 space needs study, first of all, included all county functions, administration, community development, finance, general services, information services, social services, the museum, the visitor's center, and some shared service spaces that departments use together, like the mailroom and so forth. It also included non-courts constitutional officers for the Commissioner of Revenue, the Sheriff, and the Treasurer, and it included Commonwealth mandated offices provided for the Rabbinic Health District, the voter registrar, including voting machine storage, and the cooperative extension. Overall, the 2013 study predicted a need for almost 30,000 square feet, or about a 30% increase in space by the year 2032. It observed a projected increase in staff of, at twice that rate, or nearly twice that rate, at 57.5% for that period, also to 2032. Now, what we've seen so far, though, in social services is that the real rate of growth in service demand and the need for space for folks that provide that service has far exceeded the projections from the 2013 study. Social services demands and caseloads are up, additional staff have been approved, and we're working to meet the new normal that goes with the higher demand. If the social services demands continue to grow at the present trajectory, that increased need by itself would exceed the total need projected in the 2013 study. And we're hoping certainly that that doesn't happen, that the economy will improve, our success in economic development will create jobs, and other local changes will slow down or even reverse the trend with social services. But I just want to highlight the notion that the space needs study was a set of estimates and projections, and that already between 2013 and 2017, we've seen some variance from those projections. And so, along with the acute need for some additional space for social services, there also are needs that total about 8,000 square feet for additional space in information services, the Commissioner of Revenue, and some other, some other departments. The 2013 space needs study predicted a 1,235-square-foot increase in space needed by social services by, by this year, by 2017. And again, the current need for social services is now by itself 3,000 square feet. The 2013 study predicted a 3,003-square-foot need for additional space from the Health Department by 2017, yet that need predicted in 2013 does not appear to have materialized as the Health Department Local Director has indicated to me that their current space is adequate for their needs and continues to be adequate. So I do hope, and I don't believe that social service demands will continue to grow over the next 15 years as quickly as they've grown over the past four or five, we really can't say with great confidence that our actual needs won't be greater than predicted in the space needs study. And I note, like, unlike some other things that we do, social services functions inherently and necessarily involve a good deal of human contact. Our social services workers work long hours, and they maintain heavy caseloads, and that has presented employee retention issues for us that we are working on through other strategies as well. Now, this was a slide that, from the presentation of the last meeting that elicited several comments back on May 9th. I've added a note here that highlights those comments, that, and read at the bottom. The board commented on the possible use of the $1.5 million budgeted to demolish the old sheriff's office and finish the ground floor of Merchant Square. Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Benton particularly made comments on this issue, May 9th, and the, having renewed, reviewed this concept with the staff, the idea of using the $1.5 million that was budgeted to rehabilitate the old sheriff's office to instead demolish the old sheriff's office and then use a portion of the funds to finish the ground floor of Merchant Square. What I've found is, first of all, the $1.5 million that's budgeted, if it was spent to rehab the old sheriff's office, would not completely finish the old sheriff's office into fully usable space. It would repair the foundation, the water issues, and the systems in the building, and would do some level of plain vanilla interior work, but it would not provide the partitions and the full interior fit-up to make that usable space. So even though if you ran the numbers on the 13,440 square feet and the $1.5 million, that math would work out to $115 per square foot that's budgeted for that project, the problem is that that is by at least half a million dollars, if not more, not enough money to rehab the old sheriff's office and the usable space. So it looks like demolishing the old sheriff's office and finishing the ground floor of Merchant Square might be a wiser use of this budgeted million and a half. This project could free up space to allow the courthouse renovations to proceed, because remember, the museum back office is in the ground floor of the 1994 Mosley-designed former Circuit Court building. So that, proceeding with this hypothetical project to demolish the old sheriff's office and finish the ground floor of Merchant Square and move the museum fully there, would free up the courthouse buildings to proceed with the courthouse renovation, which recall on May 9th, the board authorized to go into design. Now, another issue that's shown on this slide that's of interest is the 10 and 1/4 million budgeted for the renovation and reconfiguration upgrade of HVAC and electric for the 19,000-square-foot Marshall Center. And also, just running straight on the numbers that are presented on the slide, that's looking at a cost of $540 per square foot, which is more than twice the cost of building a new building. The real issue with the Marshall Center, gentlemen, is that the interior layout, that building was engineered and designed as a school. The halls, the walls that form the interior halls and passageways in the building are all load-bearing, and it is a colossal undertaking, and therefore quite expensive, to repurpose that building. Based on discussions with Ed and other staff and others, in my mind, I would like for at least bid package purposes to think about or use as a measuring tool a value of $175 a square foot for what we ought to be at least targeting to pay as a fair rate, an estimation rate for building space. Why would we pay $540 a square foot to renovate the Marshall Center when we ought to be able to build new space for $175 a square foot, or perhaps a little over that? It is, it's an aggressive estimate. I think it's a solid estimate for estimating and bid solicitation purposes, and let's see what we get. By the way, by way of comparison, we ran back and I got Bonnie to extract the cost of a little bit of land acquisition that was necessary with the public safety building. The county paid $234 per square foot to construct the public safety building. So I want to be clear that I think that the $175 a square foot estimate, and those were a bit different economies, a bit different contracting markets, the 175 is an aggressive number, but I would like to see what we can hit. I've explained why the re, a reconfiguration of the Marshall Center with the load-bearing orientation, the rest of it, is so expensive. I think that we need to explore other alternatives, and the one that I've been trying to pursue really since the summer of 2015 is to explore opportunities to privatize the Marshall Center. One of the primary tasks I assigned, economic development, was to find a private user for that building, because I think it would be far wiser for us to use the Marshall Center as a rent generator rather than as a renovation project hole to throw money in, frankly, at $540 a square foot. Seeing that 10 and 1/4 million dollar cost really was quite arresting. Now, last fall, in fact, this was bringing back a concept from much further ago, back 10 years ago when they started, the enterprise of St. Michael the Archangel High School, they expressed interest in leasing the Marshall Center then, because they are a school, and that would be an ideal undertaking for them. The board at the time was hesitant, given that they were a completely fledgling operation with no track record, no, no proven viability as a business. Well, St. Michael's is still interested in the Marshall Center. They are now a going concern with a 10-year history, an enrollment of over 100, and a projected, a projected healthy increase in enrollment that would position them to pay a good rent. Their existing facility is patently inadequate to meet their space needs, and they pay a healthy mortgage on that that is most of the value indicated on the bottom of this slide. So it's not unrealistic to think that a tenant like St. Michael's could pay in the range of $25,000 to $30,000, or $30,000 to $35,000 a month in rent. Rent at that rate from the Marshall Center would support debt service on $6.3 million worth of borrowed money. At $175 a square foot, $6.3 million would construct 36,000 square feet of new building on county-owned property. Now, as a, as a rule of thumb to go with, the 36,000 square feet, if you laid it out on two floors of 18,000 square foot each, the Merchant Square building is that size. Just to give you a true scale of the size that that is talking about. The 36,000 square feet, recall, the existing social services offices are in one whole floor of Merchant Square. A building twice the size of one floor of Merchant Square would provide room for all of social services, including their current pressing needs and predicted future need, and room for the Health Department, together in a single two-story facility. Here's a slide that Mr. Vakos showed to you on May 9th, and he explained this slide and talked about the variety of amenities that it shows, the green spaces of parks and interpretive areas, and the big stormwater, joint stormwater pond that is suggested up in the upper right-hand corner. That would actually be a re-establishment of a farm pond that was on that property that blew out, I don't know, 15, 18, maybe 20 years ago. But that would provide cooperative stormwater accommodation for the, a large portion of the village development. The green spaces are mostly proposed, they could be interpretive or history-telling parks. It's invisible at this scale, but Mr. Vakos has also talked about a network of walkways and trails to tie the whole courthouse area together and even connect us to the National Battlefield Park so that future Civil War kids campers wouldn't be walking in the road or through people's front yards like they were in the pictures that you saw on May 9th. These sorts of community enhancements, the stormwater upgrade, the interpretive parks, the recreation areas, the trails and walkways, all of those extra amenities, those are things that, to my awareness, can be funded through a special service district, or they could be funded through a tax increment financing, a TIF, as the board has referred to those. Now, when you saw this slide, though, on May 9th, there was no mention of the dark blue square that is about a quarter of the way up from the bottom and just off to the left of center. And I want to look at the dark blue square because that was drawn as no more than a thought on county-owned property with a footprint of, I believe, the same as the Merchant Square building, 18,000 square feet. And again, depending on the number of stories built, that square could be showing a building that's either 18,36,000 or 54,000 square feet. Based on the estimate of $175 a square foot, 36,000 square foot building would cost $6.3 million and could be financed using revenue from leasing the Marshall Center if we can successfully privatize that asset. And again, the other enhancements shown in this plan might be the subject of a plan for financing through a special service district or through a TIF. There may be, and I think Carl still has questions pending about allowable uses for the special service district funds in connection with the blue square. So I'm not ready to surrender the flag on the notion that a building might be at least contributed to, particularly a building within the special service district might be contributed to by the special service district. But that, at the moment, is, is to some extent, an open question that would need to be resolved. I want to focus more broadly, if we can, at this stage, simply on the big building blocks of this plan. The challenge to solve the space problem that is so evident in social services in particular, to privatize the Marshall Center because it makes no sense at $540 a square foot. And I was, I myself had the very painful recollection that that estimate is now somewhat dated, and I doubt it might be done at that price today. now somewhat dated and I doubt it might be done at that price today. To stay at the altitude of considering the major building blocks of this plan. Looking at the numbers and in particular, the TIF concept, this is also a slide that Mr. Vacos showed the board and the community on the 9th of May. The I in TIF, of course, standing for increment. And so we want to consider particularly the difference between, and that's the thing, this is literally the slide that he showed you. And the slide that was presented showed only the projected future tax base represented by the Vacos, Vacos Development, which is enabled down here at the courthouse. Thing is, I wanted to focus on what is the increment. So since seeing the slide, in other words, the difference between the existing tax base is already on the books and the tax base increment or the difference that will come with the development. So since I saw the slide, I asked the county's assessor to focus on the, the Vacos holdings and what this increment might work out to be. And what I learned from that is that the, is that the Vacos Company Holdings in the Spotsylvania Courthouse area is currently assessed at a, at a bit less than 5% of the projected total assets here. So in other words, the total assets projected at build-out, 775 million dollars, is, the current value of that 775 million dollars projected is less than 5% of that number or in other words, less than 40 million. Assessor's analysis also suggested more, so the, said the other way, more than 95% of that 775 million will be new, projected to be new value added to our tax base. And that, at that, at the current tax rate, then, more than six and a quarter million of the 6.587 million indicated as potential real estate tax revenue, and again, this is very artificial because that's stating it at today's tax rate. But that's, that is the number we have to work with, that the potential real estate tax rate there indicated, tax revenue indicated at 8.85, 6.587 million and a half is the real estate tax on the 775 million. Of that, 95%, a bit more than 95%, or six and a quarter million would be projected to be new revenue. so I can, I've done two things. One was to confirm with Mr. Vacos the reasonableness of the analysis that I applied with what she concurs with the 5%, 95%. And also to confirm, because this is projected, so when would we expect to see this build-out and should we reasonably expect the tax base to show up by 2032, the horizon in the space needs study? Even allowing for natural human optimism, I think it's conservative to say that the expectation is that the tax, this build-out should be here well before 2032, Mr. Vacos would say. So I think it's conservative to anticipate that it should be here by 2032. I want to touch back and I just have two more slides. Thank you for bearing with me. I know I've had a point or two on each one and I'm sorry, this is as complicated as it is, but it is our world. And one of the fundamental challenges here is that there is no authorization through referendum to issue general obligation bond debt to build the space that's needed for social services or any other future need of the general government. So this has been an exercise in creative finance, starting with avoiding the $540 a square foot Marshall Center project, create, raking in the best value for the million and a half already budgeted for the old sheriff's office and finding a way forward that is responsible use of taxpayer funds and, and with privatizing the Marshall Center asset, which is the most, particularly to privatize it as a school, is the most reasonable use of that asset. So here we are again, back at the 18,000 square foot footprint with the blue square. And again, this is located on county property, located adjacent to ample existing parking. And I've asked our planning staff to confirm the sufficiency of that, the existing parking lot behind the courts and down and across from the public safety building to accommodate this need. I don't have final numerical confirmation back, but the initial word is that there, the parking is sufficient to accommodate this need. And this would be an ideal space to co-locate the Department of Social Services and the Health Department offices. And that would free up potentially space in, not only in Merchant Square with social, from the social services, but also in the whole building by moving the health department to this space. There may, depending on how many stories are built, also be some storage space for public safety and other issues that have been stated and that the board is aware of. But, long story short, this proposed solution provides the most economically efficient solution to the reasonable horizon of our space needs as, as we can currently comprehend them. Now, I know at the end of the old movie, Phineas would tell you that it's over, but I, just to wrap up, with all this said, what I need is your direction to go forward. There've been an awful lot of, of work and analysis done and creative work done to pull together the pieces of this plan, many initial conversations going back a year and, and some of those conversations much further than a year, harkening back to the old conversations with St. Michael's. So I need the board's direction and consensus or some sense of how to move forward from here. I would sincerely recommend and very much appreciate the board's support and direction to proceed with the formation of what I call Project One, the, the one that was commented on by, by Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Benton at the May 9th meeting, to proceed with a, form up a plan to demolish the old sheriff's office, finish the first floor of Merchant Square and relocate the museum out of the courts building so that we can proceed with the court project. Further, I'd ask for the board's support for us to proceed with drawing up project specifications for some sort of project in the, in the blue square, whether that's a two-story project or a three-story project, depending on the answers for, to what degree might an SSD or a TIF participate in the financing. Again, rent from the Marshall Center should reasonably finance two stories of that building in the blue square. And that, but that's the next piece is asking for the board's support that we proceed with the development of a plan and bring back a solid and detailed plan with St. Mike's, test their resolve and consider also solicitation to others for privatization of the, of the Marshall Center. I would think under a lease or lease purchase because it's not an asset that we should give away lightly. But though, that seems to be, in, in my estimation, folks, our best way forward from here.
Okay. Any questions from Mark? Mr. Jakubowski?
Couple of them. First, thank you. When this came up last time, it was kind of rushed through at the end of the evening. And so it's, it's something that we do need to think about and look at. I, I think that when Mr. Vacos was here, he had stated that this area at full build-out will be roughly 15,000 residents. And so thinking of that, I think some of the other steps that we need to think about beyond are obviously traffic, but then also schools. You see Robert E. Lee sitting right there and I would be interested in knowing what the school's plan for that would be in the future, especially with all the units right there. You could have a very nice walkable school. I don't know how much more you can add to it or what, what kind of room you have with it, but you could actually do something with it. And so I, I would like to bring them in on this discussion too and see about how we can even perhaps bring them home with future buildings in, as we go along. The, the discussions that we continually have about space and needing space, especially, especially for social services, I think the public needs to know that the social services department is being driven by state funding and state positions, mostly. The county is not really driving that. That's, that's one of those functions that is sort of a pass-through. And so it's not as though we can simply say, just stop hiring, we don't want them, we have to do something with them. It's, it's just like the courts. You can complain about building bigger courts, but the state forces us to provide those chambers for the judges that they send. And, you know, we, we don't have to do what Fredericksburg did with their, you know, enormous building that they, that they put up there. But I think that we can do it in a cost-effective way, but we still have to do it. And so I think having a larger plan and figuring out how it's going to work together, I think is, is wise to do. But I really think that we need to take into account the traffic situation we'll have going down towards Marshall Park in front of the Marshall Center, you know, all the old roads that we have that are still two lanes that you put all these people, they're going to spread out and go many different directions. And that's not even, you know, it's not even on the 15-year plan. I'm not even sure if it's on the county thoroughfare plan for any, any type of improvements or connections or anything that we could do to, to head off the traffic that we know is going to be coming. But I, I think that we definitely need to move ahead with some sort of direction. The, the more time that we put it off, the less time that we have to address the issue. And I would say that the demolishing the old sheriff's building, finishing off the Merchant Square Building would be step one. And I think that that, I would really like to see something brought back for us to give direction to county administration to do. But then in addition to that, I do think that we should investigate a, a future building out towards the public safety building. What would that look like? How could we pay for it? Creative options, a TIF, any type of, of ways that we could finance it in a responsible way, I think would be the, the way I would like to go. And just because we are asking for the information doesn't mean that this is the final decision. This is simply moving the issue down the road a little bit so that we can get more information and see exactly what it's going, going to look like. Thank you.
Mr. Jakubowski, when would you like that information back by? Or when, when could it be back by?
I would ask the, if, if staff could prioritize the sheriff building and the Merchant Square building as maybe, you know, next meeting in June, I'm sorry, or, or July, whatever is feasible to do for us to then move ahead on it.
Mr. Sebula, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too agree, since we do have the money for the demolition of the old sheriff's office, I, I would like to see us push forward on that as soon as possible. The tourism is one of the major factors in, in this area and for us to restore the courthouse area back to its original configuration by the removal of that building, I think would do a lot towards enhancing tourism in this area. As far as the Marshall Building is, is, I would, the privatization, I think, is a, is a solid idea. However, I am concerned about the existing use on the first floor and not the second floor because we, we've, we've already talked about planned use for that, moving the people. But the, the use of the first floor affects a lot of activities that, that go on here in the county and parks and recreation, use of that, the senior center, a teen center. If we're going, if we're going to go to privatization, we've got to, we've also got to plan ahead for what we're going to do to those spaces and how we're going to provide places for those activities. That's what, all I have right now. I think we need to move ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, so a couple of things. We automatically assume that we're going to hire 57% increase in staff. So I guess in 2013 is the last time we reviewed that. I guess my question is, why are we assuming this county staff, county employees are going to grow so much? With automation and other things like that, why aren't we looking for ways to reduce the amount of new employees added to the county? So I think that's one of the first steps to validate every position before we spend millions of dollars on additional spaces. So the other question, you talk about building another building automatically here at the courthouse. I know there's some efficiencies to being here, but, I mean, we need to look at potentially leasing spaces, looking at lower-cost spaces, particularly for health and human services, which potentially, if you believe the economy's going to improve, potentially a lot of these billets may go away and we won't need quite as much space. So building a building to accommodate people that may be downsized in the future, or hopefully they will be, doesn't make sense. So I think that's something we need to, it needs to be the total business case it looks at. Build, lease, production, something like that. So before we make any moves on further buildings, I think we need a bigger, a better analysis on what's really required. And I do agree on, you know, we, we talked about last week and moving forward with demolishing the sheriff's office. So I, I don't know, I think you probably had enough direction on that already. And then, of course, I've been, I thought leasing the Marshall Center was the best thing to do or tear it down. So old buildings are nothing but money pits, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Benton?
Yeah, without a doubt, I think that unfortunately I had to say anything about county buildings and construction, but that project from the get-go was a, a waste. That building was horrible from the point we moved in there. But anyway, you know, I think to a, to a point, I mean, we got, we got a lot of ideas and stuff, but, you know, Mr. Taylor, you're the one that sees us day in and day out. You talk to the department heads and you have the interactions with the personnel that we don't on a daily basis, every day, probably seven days, 365. And, you know, I would like to, you know, use your judgment and your ideas for the best of this community and, and our, our departments and, and our services that we provide, our community. I don't, you know, we bought a $10 million building from Mr. Vacos with no parking over there. How wise that was, I don't know, but that's what we did. It's already crowded enough over there. I don't see social services going away in any future years. And putting them over by the public safety building is, in my opinion, probably the best move we could probably do. Public safety and the social services and they pretty much work hand-in-hand on a, on a daily basis on a number of things. You know, we need to have these plans and I, I have a feeling, or just a little bit, that we've been presenting things that you're trying to, as far as road and traffic moving is keep our services in somewhat centrally located areas and also grouped so there's less moving of employees from one building to the other on a daily basis. So I, I support what you're bringing forward to us. I, I think we always have to look at different ideas and different places we can go, but like I say, when we were moved down to the Capital One Building, it was, you know, where it would take 35 minutes for me to get to just a courthouse to do my business, I had to go an hour farther just to do another portion. So the amount of traffic that you add and when you start separating services into various buildings throughout the, our community- buildings throughout the, our community, at some point, it becomes a waste and doesn't do the citizens much good as far as what they have to do to get from building to building to building, to different service to different service, to do what they need to do on a, on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis. So I trust your judgment, and I, I like the ideas, and I think we do need to move definitely forward on the sheriff's office and the finishing out of the Merchant Square. The rest, we can always try to look at different things, but as far as renting low places and stuff like that, you're talking about moving our services four mile fork, five mile fork. You know, how far away do you want folks traveling and then our services in general having to go from one to the other when they have to do business with one another? I mean, so you talk about waste. And again, that building across the street, we can certainly use for a lot of other services if we can combine them and use that instead of social services. So I'd support what your initial intentions are, and like I say, if you come back with something different that will, that will fit right in the community and the services that we provide and make it as convenient as possible, then so be it. But I like what I see, I'm seeing. And I'm hoping that, you know, if we can not, we can do both, I'm assuming, a TIF in our, our service district and use the rent if we can find somebody who wants to move into the Marshall building. So that's all I got.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with what you've brought up. I, I think social services certainly need to be, have more operating room. One thing that Mr. Benton did bring up, and I think this is, when I was on the board, we were down at the Capital One buildings. We became much more efficient, less time traveling. You had all your heads, your division heads and stuff like that together, and it proved to be, we, we became a very, very, very efficient county and county administrators in, in that case. It also saved us fuel. You've got to think about if we're leasing buildings somewhere off-site, stuff of that, we're, we're traveling every day and that's going to cost us fuel. So, you know, I, I see everything, right now, we've got everything up in this area. I really do like the idea of it. My only real concern right now would be the, the cost per square foot. And the only reason I go with that is, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, we put up the two, the judicial and the public safety building, I believe, was 60, are they 30,000 square feet buildings? I, I think, and then they, we built up two of them, so 60,000, and we were right around $30 million. And then now that may include the, the land we bought with that, too. So there's one benefit there, but I'm not sure if it's still $25 a square foot with cost of land. But please, check it. I think it's just a little aggressive on that side. But even at 2,000, I, I do like the idea of being able to rent the Marshall Building to St. Michael's. I think it's a great idea. I think it does help. It gives us, my concern there would be what type of contract would we have with St. Michael's as far as a five-year contract or something of that nature? Because right now, you know, would they be able to survive at certain rent and stuff of this nature? And the cost of education probably goes up every year, and then therefore, do they lose students and stuff of that nature? So those, those are concerns that I would have as far as betting on something that we thought we had in five years but find out in two years we don't have it, or in three years. So those are the type of things I would talk to St. Michael's about, see what we could do with something of that nature. And, but I do think it's very important, and I agree with everybody up here, we, we need to get the sheriff's office torn down. We certainly need to have that first floor developed and whatever we can do down there. I know there were some concerns, but I don't think we should have those concerns. So I, I do support it very much. I think your presentation was really good, some great ideas, how to get the funding and the money and that nature. And, you know, we do have to grow. And the, the more we grow, the more efficient, I believe, we, we, we do. And, you know, believe it or not, people do work, I think, when you work in a tough situation where your facilities are not that good and stuff of that nature, your morale goes down a little bit. And I, not that you have to go and, and have just a great office, but some of the conditions that we have, and one of them was the police, the old sheriff's office, we knew that. And by building the new public safety office, I think, went pretty well for us. So I, I would really like to see, look into the new building. I, I think your presentation, how we could fund it and stuff like that is reasonable. And we'll see, you know, we'll have public hearings, we'll hear what the public has to say about it. But I appreciate the work you did on this tonight. And like I said, thank you very much for it. I'm looking forward to helping.
Just got a couple of comments. I, I'm in agreement with pretty much everything that was said tonight. I am a little leery, and I, I think the key to this is phases, right? You do one phase, you do another. We could tear down the old sheriff's building as a first phase, build out the first floor of the Merchant Square building. I'm leery of going $6.3 million in debt depending on a tenant that is very unique. It sounds like the Marshall Building can only really be used as it is for a school. I'd like you to continue forward, just like, it sounds like the majority of the board, to see if we can work out a deal like that. But then again, a 6.3 million debt service is probably 25 years is what I think was used for that. That means the tenant would have to be in that building, the Marshall Center, for 25 years, and I don't think we can count on that, and I don't want to. So I would also support that we looked in the SSD or the TIF to accelerate the payoff so it's not a 25-year plan, but less than that. And then also, we do need to look at other places. The South Point Building, tried to sell it, had a buyer a couple times. Can that be used for social services? Can that be used for space? Maximize that space out. That should be part of what you come back with, us not only looking at the little blue square building, but other, other places that are already existing that might serve that purpose, too. Any other discussion points on this? All right. Well, thanks, Mark. I think you've got enough. Any questions for us?
No, this is very helpful. We will do our best to promptly bring back detail on the Project One, Old Sheriff's Office and Merchant Square first floor. I understand that the, the schools are unique uses. There are a couple of schools around. St. Mike's has been on a solid trajectory of growth over their 10 years, and their interest has been unwavering in this building. We'll see what might be possible, but they run in cycles, so they may want to have a conversation promptly because I understand that their enrollment is increasing aggressively.
That sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I think that's it. Anything else on our agenda that I missed? Make a motion to adjourn then.
Oh, moved.
All right. Call the question.
While you're voting, I do mention again that the first meeting in June is on Thursday the 15th, and that Monday is Memorial Day, and I hope to see you out at the memorial in front of the historic courthouse at 10:00 AM for the wreath laying. And if I don't, have a blessed Memorial Day.